I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. First item on the agenda is a proclamation.
Proclamation. Whereas the city of Renton celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 23 million small businesses in the United States representing more than 99 percent of American companies, and whereas small businesses create two-thirds of the net new jobs and generate 46 percent of private gross domestic product, and whereas small businesses employ over 55 percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States and contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue, and whereas the city of Renton recognizes the importance of supporting small businesses in our community that create jobs, boost our local economy, and help preserve neighborhoods, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 29, 2014, to be Small Business Saturday in the city of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to buy local and support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year, and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 24th day of November 2014, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Person. I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Very timely. We're getting into the holiday season, and I think the proclamation really spells it out clearly on how valuable our small business community is to the city and to providing jobs and services to all of our citizens, so we really want to encourage you to shop locally. Okay, moving on to a public hearing, Raquel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Raquel Timmons, and I'm representing the Department of Community and Economic Development, and I'm here to present staff's recommendation on our annual update for school district impact fees. The city of Renton is served by three school districts, the Renton, Isaguas, and Kent School Districts, and each year they provide the city with a capital facilities plan. Included in that plan are requests for impact fees. Those fees are used to help offset the impact of growth on schools, and they are only assessed on new residential development. The money collected by the city on behalf of each district may only be used for capital facilities, and that would not include allocations for operations and/or maintenance. This year, the Isaguas School District is requesting a fee of $4,560 for each new single-family home. This would be a $1,170 decrease from last year. For multifamily units, the Isaguas School District is requesting a $1,458 fee. This would be a $361 increase from last year. The Kent School District is requesting a continuation of both the single-family and multifamily fees from last year. The fee for 2015 is requested at $5,486 for each new single-family home, and $3,378 for each multifamily unit within the Kent School District. Within the Renton School District, for each new single-family home, the request is for This represents an $86 increase from last year, and a very slight increase for multifamily units within the Renton School District resulting in a fee of $1,360. Staff is recommending adoption of the provided capital facilities plans, as well as an approval of each requested fee. This item has been referred to the Finance Committee for review, and we are asking that the council hear public testimony tonight, approve the Finance Committee report dated for today, and present the ordinance for first reading. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Jason, do we have any sign-in, signup sheets?
I'll go get them.
Was there anybody that wanted to testify?
I believe we have representatives from the Renton and Kent School Districts.
Okay. Why don't you come on up? Please give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes to present your comments to the council.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Ralph Fortunato, F-O-R-T-U-N-A-T-O. My residence is in Kent. I represent the Kent School District. I'm the Director of Fiscal Services for the Kent School District. And actually, our impact fees are being the same as they were for the last five years. We haven't raised them in five years. For the city of Renton, we've actually, we haven't collected any impact fees for the city of Renton for the last two years. However, if something happens with the Fairwood area, that would then become out of King County and then into the city of Renton, when then impact fees, a new development would be assessed there, whereas asking for a continuation of the fees that we've assessed for the last five years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. John?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Knudson, K-N-U-T-S-O-N, representing the Renton School District. I am a resident of Kent, however. Brief comments tonight, your staff report contains the amounts. The increases requested by the Renton School District are limited by the voluntary 1.58 percent inflationary change in the Seattle-area cost-of-living adjustment. Couple updates is that the city of Bellevue took action on November 17, incorporating the Renton School District's capital facilities plan into their comprehensive plan and approved the inter-local agreement. So we're set to begin collecting impact fees from Bellevue, or they'll collect it, starting in 2015. The city of Tukwila tells us they have no immediate plans for residential construction, however their comprehensive plan anticipates residential construction in an urban center adjacent to South Center in the next seven to 10 years. So we're working with staff on that. They're not, they haven't offered to take immediate action, but we are in conversation with them on an ongoing basis. So thank you for your consideration. I appreciate the work of Raquel in this matter always. So thank you.
Thank you. What's the wish to the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Jason, do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor? Move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Raquel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
And we'll have action later in the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, next is administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Mr. Mayor, we have one item. We have an audiovisual presentation, a couple of budding movie stars in our midst. We wanted to do a public service announcement to educate the public on how to prevent auto thefts, and I'll have Priti Shridhar introduce the council to this topic.
Come on up, Bob. We don't want you to be shy.
So, Mayor, Council, Priti Shridhar, Deputy Public Affairs Administrator here with Detective Bob Anishi. Couple weeks ago, Bob came, you know, to talk to me and was talking about auto theft and how it's such a major problem in the entire Puget Sound area, and it gets worse during the winter months. You know, it gets cold, and you turn your car on and say it's going to get heated up, go inside to have your coffee, and then you come out and there's no car there. Or, you know, you run into the grocery store, leave your car running, leave the keys in the car, and there's no car there. So anyway, we decided that it's an important time to get the message out to folks that even something that you would never think of, you know, leaving the car unattended or the keys in the car, could actually have a really devastating effect, not just the car stolen, but oftentimes what it is stolen for, who it is stolen by, what happens. I mean, it's just real, you know, real tragedy in every way. So Bob and I decided that we would do a, well, stop, I'll get it, would do a public service announcement so that we, you know, try to find a way to get the message across. Of course, we're doing this public service announcement without the hundreds and thousands of dollars that, you know, that private sector has to spend, but I'll play the message for you, and then I really want to spend time talking about the amazing work that Bob did, so. And hopefully we have volume. Just double-check that, yes. No?
Do I know you?
I'm going to go pick up Jimmy, we're going to go break into some houses and take people's stuff.
All right. Sweet.
Did you give him?
Who are you?
Come on, please, I need to steal some mail.
Here you go.
Oh, yeah.
Can I take the truck?
What for?
I need to run from the cops, I might run over some people in the process.
Sure, go ahead.
Don't care.
Would you actually tell any of these people that they can take your car? If you leave your car running up and you're not in it, that may be exactly what you're telling them. Don't let your cold car become a hot car. Your message for the city of Renton and the Renton Police Department.
It's a repeat, it's a loop, but as you can see, these award-winning, Emmy-winning, Oscar-winning stars are none other than Ed Segayo, Maria Boggs, Quintebo, and David Skelton. All of our employees who came after hours, volunteered their time. The home is Tina Harris, her home, we just went in and took it over. The voiceover at the end, and really, the brains behind this, so I'm thinking he's looking for another career as a scriptwriter, producer, director, is Bob Anishi. And of course, our producer, the videographer is Clay, who's right now taking a video of tonight's meeting. So I really wanted to take the opportunity to say special thanks to everyone who made this happen. It's a great piece, it was really, the time we took to think about it and get it done is amazing, and, you know, it's just amazing how everyone got into it. We're going to do a lot of play because the focus here is on the message, so it's going to play on Channel 21, but also on our social media, YouTube, send it out through our e-newsletter to, you know, thousands of customers, and keep emphasizing the message that please protect, don't let your cold car become a hot car.
There's a round of applause.
Briefly, the only reason I might look for a different career is because if my auto theft rates keep up the rate they are, then it's not a huge amount of fun. This year, year-to-date, we have seen auto theft rates that are up 32.5 percent above last year's rates for the period of January through October, which is high, not quite as high as Seattle's, which are up some 40 percent. Actually, they have a single precinct, North Precinct, there with a 56 percent increase in auto theft rates. There was a news story today about the fact that their auto thefts ran 431 thefts for the last 30 days alone. That's a huge and growing problem, and we have had success from the mid-2000s when we instituted new programs and also some new legislation for the past, what, eight years in knocking that theft rate down, but the last couple of years have seen an uptick. And this year, all over the region, auto theft has been on a phenomenal rate of increase. And as Priti mentioned, the issue to that is not just the economic cost, but there are human costs involved as well. And anything that helps reduce that rate, especially in such a fashion where we are, you know, we literally sometimes tell people, here, take my car. Drug users have a term for cars left warming up. They call them steamers, they call them puffers, because they can see them from blocks away, and they know, hey, there's something I can grab, no sweat. Those things are huge danger, not just to our citizens from an economic standpoint, but also to life and limb. I think the mayor spent one morning once chasing a stolen vehicle taken somewhere surface races up through the Highlands.
And above and beyond there.
Right. So that idea of increasing public awareness to this problem, the entire problem of auto theft, but also maybe to some other problems where we make ourselves victims, is something we're looking at trying to do on an ongoing basis, and thank you all very much for giving us the forum to do so.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Bob. Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Bob, I'm interested in knowing, what are the top three things that people can change to prevent them from losing their car? We know that steamers are leaving your car running is one of them. What else are people doing that?
You know, the largest problem is this. What people lose in the real world is nothing like what they lose in grand theft auto or in gun in 62nd. It's not Lamborghinis, it's not Mercedes, it's not a, you know, new Cadillac, it's a 1994 Honda Accord, it's a 1992 Toyota Camry, it's a 1994 Nissan truck. These are vehicles that people don't think of as vulnerable because their thought is, hey, it's only worth a couple thousand dollars, it's all I can afford, this gets me to work, this gets me to daycare, but who's going to want to take this car? Anybody who doesn't have a car already and needs a car to commit other crimes or to get to their drug dealers and this kind of thing is going to take your car because they can. Consequently, and part of its economics, if you have a $1,500 car that just barely gets you to work and barely gets you to your errands to the day, it's impractical to put $3,000 worth of high-end security system in it. Instead, you might be well-served to put something like the club on it. Yeah, it's not foolproof, but it may deter people from messing with that car because they know it's a little extra hassle. They didn't bring a hacksaw with them, they can't saw through the steering wheel, there's a better chance they'll get caught if it takes them more time to mess with this car. And obviously, these are people who are not overly ambitious, they're not really the hardest workers in the world because they wouldn't be doing this if they were, but that element of public education, that's something that's kind of difficult because, again, people kind of depend on the media and their beliefs. One of the problems to this, and I'm sure a lot of you can attest to that from dealing with folks, is that we tend to think in slightly sheltered terms. We would find it absolutely amazing that somebody would go and just take something that wasn't theirs, but for a sizable segment of society, that's survival. And so because we don't recognize that fact, that we have these vulnerabilities, and there are people out there who will do these things to us, that means that people still leave their doors unlocked, still leave their cars unlocked, still leave their purse in a car when they run into the daycare center, still leave their spare keys in their car, and then when that car gets the window smashed out and these people are rifling for change, they take that and grab the car next door that they have the keys for now. All of these things happen on a regular basis, and to the victims of that, that is astonishing. You talk to them, and I never would have believed this could have happened. That's part of the difficulty, is awakening people to what their vulnerabilities are and what kind of factors are out in the environment there that can make their lives completely disrupted.
I'm very intrigued by what you said, awakening people to the vulnerabilities that are out there, which sounds like an awareness problem, just really being consciously aware of what could possibly happen. And it doesn't matter, you know, some of the things, what they could do in terms of where they park their car, because that's not the target, it's the car itself, so it doesn't matter where it is located.
A lot of that, too, is people think, my car's in my driveway, I'm just inside here, who would possibly have the nerve to come up and take my vehicle? Who would have the balls to come up and do these things to me right here? The problem is that a lot of people out there are in a mental state where they don't weigh the risk and they don't weigh the possible consequences. They don't worry about whether they might be headed off to jail if they get caught. In their mind, it'll never happen, and if it does happen, it's so far away that it's very, very abstract to them. We don't tend to think that way, and because of that, because we weigh our protections and we weigh the precautions we take, from a point of what would a reasonable person like me do, that can kind of set us up for a failure.
Bob, how much of the, the number of the individuals that you deal with on a regular basis are recidivists, the repeat offenders?
Probably close to 90 percent, maybe 95 percent. I don't know, when the last time I actually ran into somebody who had never stolen a car before was, there are actually probably three or four in the past couple of years. And then there are people who have no record, but based upon what they have done or what they have told us, we know that they've done this at least once or twice before. The exceptions were, we've had a couple of people who had some real mental issues, one of whom just wanted to go back to jail and saw his chance to do so by taking a woman's car when he noticed that she had left her purse, and one who had taken a vehicle because he wasn't capable of making good decisions, and he ended up taking a van that was out in front of someone's house when they had their nine-year-old inside and somebody chased him to the Highlands there. Elsewise, a lot of these people are people we have seen over and over and over again, and the laws have gotten tougher on that. However, part of the problem to that, my soapbox, I would forward, is that judges have been in the last couple of years a lot more reluctant to exercise the prong of their authority to levy a higher bail based upon the possibility that someone might not show up for court, what they call a failure of peer risk, an FTA risk. There are two prongs under which judges can levy a bail that may be restrictive as far as somebody's ability to make bail and get out goes, and the first one is that they're a danger to public safety in terms of life and limb. We try not to let axe murderers back out again unless we're really, really, really certain it's not going to happen while they're out awaiting trial. The other prong that was out there, and the judges exercised a lot more aggressively early on in the programs of Car Theft Initiative and in the first couple of years where legislation changed, were to say, hey, this guy has gone to warrant every time we've had a case against him, we've had to chase him down against him, he's not going to come in for court. Judges in the last couple of years have seen that as a constitutional violation, that they are not going to step across, and so a lot of people who you would think would remain in jail for a long time until they came up for trial because they're going to due five years in this thing, aren't. They are held to maybe their arraignment, potentially PR'd or released, unconditional release within a couple of days. Granted, they're innocent until proven guilty, but the problem is that they don't get out and then decide, we're going to be angels until my trial comes up because I know that this will not look good for me if I don't. They have a limited amount of time, they know, to go out and make, hey, well, the sun shines, and so the consequence is that we will see people, didn't I just yank you off the street two weeks ago? Well, yeah, but, yeah, I'm on warrant status again from DOC because I didn't show back up again to give them a UA every day as I was supposed to, and this is what I do. And honestly, sometimes you talk to people, and that is the excuse you get. Well, I'm broke, I needed money, I figure it's better to sell people shaved keys than to sell them pills or dope. I actually heard that from a suspect last year. But that's a mindset that we don't, as a citizenry, really, really appreciate. We can't, we don't see it. Police officers do a lot, which is why people think we're so strange, but realistically, there are things out there that most citizens just wouldn't believe, and that becomes a problem when they start thinking about, would anybody ever take my car here?
Well, we appreciate you working on this, and hopefully some people won't run with the car and leave the keys in it.
It's tough one, it's good.
You might suggest to Sergeant Skelton that his next career in movies is probably not going to work.
Actually, I thought he was pretty good. I'm a little worried about Maria, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, we don't have anyone signed up for audience comments, so moving on to consent agenda. We have five items for council consideration. Are there any items a council member would like polled for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I move the consent agenda to be adopted as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the committee of the whole report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Unfinished business, Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one committee of the whole report.
Committee of the whole committee report. Requested amendments to encourage affordable owner-occupied homes in the Sunset redevelopment area. The committee of the whole recommends that Howard McCumber's requested amendments to encourage affordable owner-occupied housing in the Sunset area be evaluated and considered as part of the comprehensive plan, housing and human services element, update plan for 2014, 2015, and/or as part of the city's housing strategic plan to be created in 2015, 2016, to the extent applicable or desired in establishing the city's housing goals and strategies. The city believes that the current multifamily housing incentives in the Sunset area are significant. Further, with planned public and private investment in the Sunset area, private development will be stimulated in the future and additional incentives are not necessary. At this time, the committee of the whole recommends no further action regarding McCumber's, Mr. McCumber's request at this time. The city encourages Mr. McCumber and his associates to participate in the public process for developing a new housing and human services element for the comprehensive plan. I want to add that the amendments are included with the report and will be available to the public tomorrow. This is signed by Council President Don Person.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Person. I move the committee report to be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the committee of the whole report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, committee on committees, has a committee report.
Okay, committee on committees, committee report. 2015 council committee assignments. The committee on committees recommends the following council committee assignments for 2015. Finance Committee, which is the first and third Mondays at 5:00 p.m. Don Person Chair, Greg Taylor Vice Chair, Armando Pavoni Member. Public Safety Committee, first and third Mondays at 4:30 p.m. Armando Pavoni Chair, Don Person Vice Chair, Greg Taylor Member. Community Services Committee, meets the second and fourth Mondays at 5:00 p.m. The vacant position will be the Chair, Marcy Palmer Vice Chair, Randy Corman Member. Utilities Committee, it meets on the second and fourth Mondays at 5:30 p.m. Greg Taylor Chair, Randy Corman Vice Chair, the vacant position will be a member. Planning and Development Committee, second and fourth Mondays at 4:00 p.m. Randy Corman Chair, Armando Pavoni Vice Chair, Marcy Palmer Member. And the Transportation Aviation Committee, second and fourth Tuesdays at 10:00 a.m. This will be Marcy Palmer Chair, vacant position Vice Chair, and Don Person Member. This is signed by Ed Prince and Randy Corman and Don Person, members of the committee on committees.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move council adopts the committee on committees committee report.
Second. Been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the committee on committees report. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Palmer?
Yes, I have three finance committee reports.
Yeah, the first finance committee report is regarding approval on claims of payroll vouchers. The finance committee approves her payment on November 24, 2014, claims vouchers 333645 through 334287, 10 wire transfers, and two payroll runs of benefit withholding payments totaling $11,956,026.58, and payroll vouchers including 1,453 direct deposits and 128 payroll checks totaling $3,223,626.75. This is signed by the Vice Chair, Member. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move council concur with the committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The final committee report is regarding school district impact fees. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt an ordinance to approve impact fee collection changes and capital facilities plans for three school districts within the city of Renton as follows. Collect the requested impact fee of $4,560, a decrease of $1,170, for each new single-family home, and an impact fee of $1,458, for each multifamily unit, an increase of $361, on behalf of the Isaguas School District, and continue to collect an impact fee of $5,486 for each new single-family home, and $3,378 for each new multifamily unit on behalf of the Kent School District, and collect the requested impact fee of $5,541, an increase of $86, for each new single-family home, and $1,360, an increase of $21, for each new multifamily unit on behalf of the Renton School District. The committee further recommends that the ordinances regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the Vice Chair and Members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move council concur with the committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next report is the 2014 year-end budget amendment ordinance. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an amendment into 2013, 2014 budget appropriations in the amount of $6,375,319, with the total amended budget to be $609,250,946 for the biennium. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the Vice Chair and Members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move council concur with the committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The final committee report is regarding school district impact fees. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt an ordinance to approve impact fee collection changes and capital facilities plans for three school districts within the city of Renton as follows. Collect the requested impact fee of $4,560, a decrease of $1,170, for each new single-family home, and an impact fee of $1,458, for each multifamily unit, an increase of $361, on behalf of the Isaguas School District, and continue to collect an impact fee of $5,486 for each new single-family home, and $3,378 for each new multifamily unit on behalf of for each new multifamily unit on behalf of the Kent School District. And collect the requested impact fee of $5,541, an increase of $86, for each new single-family home, and $1,360, an increase of $21, for each new multifamily unit on behalf of the Renton School District. The committee further recommends that the ordinances regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the Vice Chair and Members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the finance committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one resolution and two ordinances this evening.
The resolution is regarding the appointment of a public records officer. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Renton, Washington, appointing the city clerk or designee as the public records officer of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The first ordinance for first reading is regarding school district impact fees. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 41160 of Chapter 1, Administration and Enforcement of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code, setting the impact fee at $4,560 per new single-family home and $1,458 per new multifamily unit in the Isaguas School District, retain the impact fee at $5,486 per new single-family home, and $3,378 per new multifamily unit in the Kent School District, setting the impact fee at $5,541 per new single-family home, and $1,360 per new multifamily unit in the Renton School District, and adopting the capital facilities plans of the Isaguas Kent and Renton School Districts.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the final ordinance for first reading is regarding the budget amendment. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton fiscal years 2013, 2014 biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number 5682, and thereafter amended by ordinance numbers 5686, 5692, 5699, 5715, and 5723, in the amount of $6,375,319.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And that's it.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have several things to announce. First of all, the city will be closed on Thursday, November 27th and November 28th as city holidays. And then on December 1st at 5:30 PM, the committee of the whole will meet to discuss the council process for filling the vacant council position. I would like to say that this particular position will, whoever gets that will have to run for re, for election this in 2015, and then run again in 2017 to keep the three, four split of the council so that the whole council doesn't end up on being replaced in one year. The council, as we'll, first of all, there will be no outside discussions of any of the candidates other than that evening. The process for filing is closed on December 1st at noon. The council will be given a packet of all the people who have applied and their resumes as they arrive for the meeting. The, I see there's three options, and I want to be sure the public understands them. The council has the option of making the selection based on just a review, an open review of the resumes and their qualifications. If there's a, we also have the option of having, holding interviews, and that's a two-part. If there's a lot of candidates, we can limit that interview to a certain amount of candidates, which would be decided that evening, or we could interview everybody that evening. And now, we won't interview everybody. If that decision is made, whatever that decision is will be announced at the council meeting, and if there are to be interviews, they will be held the next day, Tuesday, November, December. So, just hard for me to say December already, but would be held on December 2nd at 5:00 PM at a special committee of the committee of the whole. And if, and then if interviews are planned, a slate of candidates to be interviewed will be announced that evening. So, it's been long, long, hard work, and we'll decide the process, what process. And then, lastly on that, I would ask that any council person who has any specific questions that they would like to ask of any candidate in case we do interviews, if you could get them to Julia by Wednesday of this week, preferably early in the morning so she can get them compiled and have them, and we can work on them when we come in on the committee of the whole at 5:30. I would, you know, how many questions we're going to ask? And my goal would be to whatever, if we do interviews and we have question, the questions would be given to all the candidates that evening if they're here, or we could email them to them, so everybody has a fair, a fair chance at getting the questions and know, know ahead of time. So, I think I've explained where we're going with this and.
Can I just clarify, make sure? So, next Monday, our committee of the whole is discussing the process for filling the vacancy.
Right.
Because at noon on Monday is the deadline, so we don't, have no idea how many we'll have.
Right.
So, that evening, committee of the whole, we talk about it and then decide how we move forward for the special committee of the whole the next night, Tuesday, December 2nd.
That's right.
And we may be interviewing a slate of candidates during that time.
Yes.
So, the candidates should be prepared to spend Tuesday evening with us from at least 5:00 to 8:00, is what we have scheduled.
Yeah, and we could go longer than 8:00 if we, depending on what the decision the council is. Because the council policy allows 30 minutes per candidate, unless there's over six, at which time the council president can then reduce the time for the interview, so. But obviously, I would go with whatever the council wants to do on that, not make a decision on my own as to the timing.
Okay.
So.
Just wanted to clarify it for the public.
And I don't know how many we have, applications now, and I'm sure by December 1st, there'll be a scurry of applications coming in, and Jason has promised that his staff will get those all copied and ready for us, which will be a big job, but we, we know he's up to it because he's young and fresh and.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, is there, is there someplace we'd recommend people go if they have questions? Would it be Jason's office?
City Clerk.
Yes, City Clerk's office. If you have any questions on the process, the City Clerk, I mean, and I'm sure anybody in the City Clerk's office can help, but Jason would be the final answer.
And then, I, I know I haven't seen a lot of email, I've received a little bit. Are there, there's some people asking to, to meet, you know, and so far, I haven't done that with anybody. Is there any advice on, on that that we can think of? I guess I, I wanted to stay fair, and I mean, I, one thing I'd say to the public is, you know, I don't, I don't think that a meeting is an essential part, with, with council members is an essential part of this. I think we'll be making a decision based on the resumes we receive and the interviewing we do. So, I don't want to necessarily encourage everybody to try and do that, but.
Maybe I can answer it best this way, is that since there's a vacancy, since we do have a vacancy, I have made a decision not to, not to meet with anybody, but the other day I did get an email from somebody I don't know, and asking how many hours I put in and what the expectations of working on the weekend as a council member were, and I answered that kind of question. So, I think if it's just a general question of information.
Okay, good. I appreciate that. And, you know, I think one thing I would say, I'd like to add for the public, since I've been doing this a long time now, 21 years, and have seen us appoint at least twice during that time, I can't remember exactly, three times maybe?
Lawson, Terry Breyer, Rich Swicker, and this is the fourth.
Yeah, okay.
Julia just updated this.
Yeah, this will be the fourth. Okay, so, I think, Don, your point about, I guess the, if, when we make this selection, it'll be a few weeks before somebody actually gets installed in this position, they would then be facing election in November. So, that's, you know, a mere 10 or 11 months later, and it just happens, the typical campaign, you know, is typically about that long. So, I would just want somebody to know that if they, if they're seeking this appointment and they're figuring in the amount of time that they're looking at, if, if it's a position they want to hold on to, they need to, to figure in a campaign. It's not going to be a free ride for anybody because the campaign will be right around the corner, so. I just wanted people to have an understanding. I don't mean to discourage anybody, I just would hate to have somebody not.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Randy brings up a point that I forgot is, is that then the goal would be on December 8th, Monday, December 8th, at the, at the council meeting, that then the council would vote on who they want, and basically the way it has happened in the past, and I anticipate it to be the same this time. Every council person can nominate somebody, and you keep nominating down until, in this case, it would be four votes. And then that person would be, so, and I, Randy's been, participated in one that went to about 1:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
Or something because.
Many, many rounds.
There was many, many, many rounds, so, but the council was a little larger then, wasn't it? Or was it seven?
It was seven.
It was seven people, but they went, they went until real late in the night, and I happened to be the sergeant-at-arms that night.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a real sleeper. Anyway, so, that, that will be the process.
One more question?
Yes, person.
Since you brought up the swearing-in, so, that person, we would vote on the 8th, but they wouldn't be sworn in, and that's probably our last meeting of the year, so they'd be sworn in the first Monday in January.
Right. I was just going to ask the city attorney, if in fact, Carmen, we decided to have a meeting on the 15th, would this appointee be sworn in before then? Do city clerks say yes?
You can have a person sworn in effective for January 1st.
Or the 15th of December if we were going to have a meeting?
Yes.
Ah.
The meetings for, and this is, the council did this a couple of years ago, because of the closeness to Christmas, where the last, these meetings have fallen, and this year's a little bit out of sync, we have canceled the last two meetings of the year, so, so we don't have a planned meeting for the 15th, and that's why we're trying to get this done on the 8th. And my suggestion to the council would be if we don't get it done on the 8th, we would have, we would call a special meeting, and maybe even in the week of the 8th, just for that one issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And as a matter of process, one of the other things I think that we should be cognizant of is that now that we are a six-member council, there is a likelihood mathematically that there could be a three-to-three split in terms of decisiveness on who to appoint, and in that situation, am I correct that the mayor would then be the, how does that work?
No, I don't think so.
How does that work?
We just keep trying till we find.
We keep trying until we, we either give up and say we totally can't do it, at which time, then it goes to the King County Council to make the decision.
Good.
That's our choice. We either, as a council, agree, if we can't agree that night.
That's why I went late into the night.
That's why I went late in the night, because nobody wants to let the King County Council pick a Renton City Council member.
Okay. Any other questions in regards to that process?
Yeah, I do have one question. So, will they have to rerun for office again? Because Terry has three years left, so they, the appointment is for one year.
Even short of one year, basically.
It is, it technically will be for a year.
Well.
January to December, but they'll be running in November.
Yeah, not, not exactly, actually. It, if, if somebody, if they're appointed and then somebody else were to win in November, the next council meeting, that winner, my recollection is.
Since they're certified, that's correct.
Yeah, would take that position. So, it really is a short position.
It's really, oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Prince just wanted to remind, I thought I announced this, but just to be careful, the, the special meeting will be on Tuesday, December 2nd at 5:00 PM, at which time, it's a special committee of the whole, and we will be making, actually, we will either interview candidates or review the, the packets in, in open and openly discuss the candidates.
Good.
Yeah, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, I, I think one other opportunity here maybe is, it's, it sounds like, I mean, if, if this goes to plan, that we would be selecting somebody this year that would start probably January 1st. So, there'd be an opportunity for the, for that person to be trained, and maybe we could, maybe the staff would be willing, or the mayor's office, to figure out what, what courses the person could take so that from the time they're selected, that they're ready to go in, on January 1st.
Within two weeks, we could teach them everything you know.
Yeah. Might only take a few days to do that. Good.
Okay.
That's it, I'm done.
Thanks. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of things I want to call out. I want to move to reset the public hearing date for the Sunset Area Plan Action Ordinance to December 8th, 2014. Does that make a motion we do that?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that we set a public hearing for the Sunset planned. What was the rest of the?
December 8th.
Sunset Plan Action Ordinance.
Okay, for December, the meeting of the December 8th?
Yes.
Right, just to clarify for the record, that meeting was set originally for December 1st, so we're just re, rescheduling it to the 8th.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
All right, and I have one other thing. I want to refer to the administration for background for our council retreat, information on Quorum and attendance policies as far as discussing the council retreat. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the utility committee meeting scheduled for December 1st has been canceled.
Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, the Community Services Committee meeting for December 1st has also been canceled.
Okay.
And in addition to that, I'd like to point out that I did send up around to all of the council members. As you remember, as you know, I'm a member of a national organization called Local Progress, which is the organization of city council members around the country. I was one of the original founding members along with Seattle City Council Member and Chair of the organization, Nick Locata. We originally started out with 30 members from around the country, and now we have expanded to over 300. The last couple of years, we've convened meetings in Washington DC where I have gone to learn about a variety of different policy, policies that are working in other jurisdictions that we could introduce to our own cities. This year, we're having our third convening, it's going to be in New York City, hosted by Mayor de Blasio. In the past couple of years, they have greatly supported my attending these events by providing me with stipends to cover most of my travel costs. This year is no different, they're doing the same. So, before you, you have a copy of a request to, for travel authorization. You can see that the entire trip is over $2,000. Local Progress is covering more than half of that. According to our council policies, whenever one of us are going to trainings or meetings outside of our regional committees, we're to bring it before the council, and that is what I'm doing today. You also have a copy of the agenda, and on the agenda, you can see that some of the things we'll be discussing, we'll be building, building progressive cities, we'll be talking about fighting for economic justice and worker rights, we'll have trainings on winning real police and criminal justice reform, building affordable housing in our cities, empowering and integrating immigrant residents, and it goes on. It's a three-day conference, and I'm here to obtain your approval for this training.
Is that directed to the council president? Okay. Is that directed to the council president?
To the council, the full council, from what I understand.
Mr. Person?
So...
Okay. All right, Ms. Palmer?
So what I have is the agenda, but I didn't have, that I say is an attachment, anything other than that.
Julia was supposed to provide one of these for every one of you.
I don't have it.
And that has the cost, I'm assuming?
This has the cost that I'm requesting. Should be a copy of this for all of you. I requested her to make a copy.
What was, so what is the dollar amount that you requested?
The amount that I'm requesting is for $947. The amount, and you also have an email that I pointed out that, and I'll read it to you. This was dated on November the 19th that I sent to the full council, the president, et cetera. It says, please find my adjusted travel expense request. Local Progress will pick up two hotel days at $357 per day, $300 towards my airfare, and they'll also provide registration cost as well. And I reflected this on the request. I've also reduced the total airfare costs. I've been able to find round-trip fares at or around $450. Initially, Julia had estimated the airfare cost to be somewhere around $800. Overall, I see this as a significant benefit to the city as well as a well-leveraged use of city funds. And you should have received a copy of the, this guy right here, along with an email that I sent you with the agenda information.
Right. That's what I had.
Yeah, this.
Right. So you'll be back on Monday, the 8th?
I'll be, I'll be leaving on the 4th, returning on the 7th.
Since that 8th is the vote of the new member.
Any other comments, council members?
I, I don't see this as being part of, of city business and part of any regional committees that the council has authorized. So I personally don't feel like I can justify the expenditure of city funds for this. And so that's my opinion.
Any other comments?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I've got a related one. I, I mean, I, I actually, when I look at the agenda, I support a lot of the items, probably most of the items on the agenda. It is progressive, and I, I respect Mr. Taylor's interest in these items. And, but I, I do have questions about the, the taxpayer money because it, it looks like political action committee activities. And so I, I struggle with that aspect. I, I heard today that if I had this right, that a council president maybe in Tuck Willa was attending, but using his own funds. And I'm just, I want to be sure that we're not out of step with, with state policy on this. So that, that's, that's, that's my issue. I actually support many of these items, but I, I, I don't know that the, that the city has, has reached a policy decision on some of these items. So I guess, I guess I'd like to hear from my colleagues a little more on that.
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Corman. It, it appears to me more of a political action committee than it does a training. And, and I don't think the city should be sending people on a political action, to a political action committee.
Any other comments? Anybody have a recommendation or a motion?
I move the request be denied.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, denying the request for travel. Any further discussion?
Yes, 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 Mr. Mayor. I, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't respond to those interpretations of a training that over 300 elected officials around the country are going to be attending. And many or most of them have no issues, such as I'm hearing from my body here, or several members here, regarding city funds being used for a partial payment of this type of a trip. And I would, I would even dare to disagree vehemently about this being a political action type of a group. We are specifically policy-driven. Local Progress is about policy. All of the agenda items that I mentioned, you are relevant to our city and our city members. I wanted to state also that I find it also very interesting that here I am, one of the most outspoken members on this body for equity and social justice, and I dedicate much of my own personal time and expense pursuing trainings to learn about that, to bring information back to this, this council for the benefit of our residents. And here I am being denied an opportunity to continue to pursue my education for the benefit of our residents. I think that the policy that we have regarding getting permission for various interests that a council member has for what they want to learn about, what they can bring to policy development in city, needs to be readdressed. It needs to be readdressed because essentially, it gives power to individual council members to decide and determine what another council member gets to know about. And I'm one of these individuals that have a very broad interest for a variety of different topics that I see can benefit our residents. Furthermore, I would say that it even lends a different discussion when we point the council member who is being denied this training opportunity at the expense of the city. He's the only council member yet to have an opportunity to be on the decision-making team, the committee on committees, to even select committees that he would be on. I think it's an embarrassment, this council would publicly view this kind of an interest in the way that it is. And that is all.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prince, and then Mr. Corman.
So a couple of things. One, Greg, I disagree with you that this allows individual council members to make a decision. Because every email I sent you, I said, bring it in front of the whole body. Because we have a council policy that says that AWC, SCA, and NLC are approved organizations that this council can send people to without any, any kind of preapproval. Because those are the organizations that have an impact on local policy here in our state. I'm not saying that Local Progress does not, because again, it does have a broad overarching emphasis on policy. But you can't tell me when something's being sponsored by SLU, which is an organization that I support and I agree with a lot of their policies, that there's not some political action there. There is. And that's all.
Mr. Corman?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say, I, again, I, like Mr. Prince and like Mr. Taylor, I, I support many of these ideas. However, when I went to the, the Local Progress website, this is their national convening, they have a section that talks about the donations they've given for campaigns. And so it, that alone wouldn't necessarily disqualify it, I don't think. But it's, it seems like we'd need to reach a decision as a council that we, that, that the city of Renton supports these policy changes. And I, I don't know if we've done that. So we'd be basically signing on to, I mean, if you, if it took an extreme case, if a council member wanted to go to the National Democratic Convention, we would not use city money for that, even though there might be a lot of good governmental policy discussed. But this, this one's more gray. It's, it's, it's like-minded individuals getting together. I guess I would feel better about, there's a, there's a distinct, distinguished people on this list, but it's not clear whether they're, they're paying their own way or whether their cities are paying. So I, I don't really know. And I, I'm, I'm not actually dead set against it, but I, I would, really, for something like this, I'd, I'd like to see more agreement amongst the council that we were, that we were backing the, the specific policies, which I would have no troubles with, but I think we ought to discuss them and make them, make them public so that the public could weigh in and say if they agree. I mean, we're talking about, just so there's no mystery, $15 an hour minimum wage, sick leave for, for everyone, sick leave coverage, things that are, that I think are economic justice. But I also think there's probably constituents in town that might want to weigh in before the council sends a representative to, to sort of fight for these things. And I, again, I, I don't have problems with those policies. And I admire that Mr. Taylor has taken them so seriously. But I think this is a matter of due process. Before we, before we start committing city funds for this, we should just openly discuss whether that's the direction that we're going to go. And then, and then I would be curious to know whether everybody else is, is paying their way. Like I say, I just, I heard that the Tuck Willa council member, I think it was Tuck Willa, was in fact paying his own way for it. So I, I'm not super hard over, we're not talking about a large amount of money. But if it was, it was a political action committee, then I mean, even if it was $10, it might not be appropriate.
And, and my response would be, first and foremost, it is not a political action committee, and there's no requirement for representatives to represent either party. It's a, it's a local progress group that is based entirely on policy, policy development. And if you visited the website, I'm sure you'd have found that there's no indication that there is a recommendation to belong to any particular party as well. Your decision is one that you all will have to, you know, own. Our community members are very interested in all of these policies. I disagree that, with the notion that somehow this isn't the type of policies that our residents are interested in. All of these policies are the kind of policies that directly impact our community. We're talking about police and criminal justice reform. We're talking about building affordable housing in our cities, empowering and integrating immigrant residents, expanding capacity and building resources, which we desperately need in our fiscal condition. So, not here to beg you to do this. I will go. I will attend this event, and I will continue to develop and fight for these kind of policy issues, like paid sick leave, like minimum wage of $15 an hour, minimum wage, like housing, affordable housing development, all of those things. We should be having conversations. And, and as a reminder, I brought that information to you at our previous retreats, each time I've come from these trainings. And I'll continue to do so, with your support, without it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to deny the travel expense. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Guys, have it. Okay, I think, Mr. Corman, you're next on new business.
I know new business, Mr. Mayor.
Here, we have a Public Safety Committee.
Oh, oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. I do have a Public Safety Committee meeting, December 1st, Monday, December 1st, 5 o'clock PM. The meeting will be in the council conference room. There are two items on that agenda. The first is amending RMC 131B, which is score use. And the second is amending RMC 6286C, which is SOAR orders. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Palmer?
I know what SCORE is, but I don't know what SOAR is.
I don't either. We'll find out at the committee meeting.
Okay. You have to let me know.
Stay out of areas-
Of racing.
Stay out of areas of racing.
Oh, racing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
Street racing.
Oh, I do remember reading about that when it was referred. Okay, yes. And I don't have any new business other than happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Okay, thank you. So, audience comment? Anybody want to address the council? The wish to the council?
We adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, and we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn.